Our city council meeting to order, ask the Weblow Boy Scout, Boy Scout group thirty-six to come up forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hey, guys.
No, face this, face this way, the flag's over here. You're ready? Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you. You want to shake his hand up there? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys. We really got to do this. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Come on, buddy. Give me the nux. Good job. There you go.
Chocolate lover or what?
Good job, guys. Blow it up.
Thank you very much. Okay, they're here. Okay, the roll, please. Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Shower.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Six present and one absent. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the city council? It doesn't have to be on items that are on the agenda this evening, but you just wanted to, to express your opinions to us. Come on up. Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Hi, good evening.
And you might have to pull that down so it's close to your mouth. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to touch basis on Steragetics.
Yes.
Sure, many of us are aware of this company that's poisoning our community. I just recently got involved. I attended the meeting that was held November twenty-ninth, and I walked out of there terrified of what this company is doing to Willowbrook and the outlining communities. I attended the demonstration at their headquarters this Saturday. We had a great turnout. And I've only lived in Darien for a year and a half. Had I known that this was going on, I would have never moved here. I have two small grandchildren at home, and I'm worried not only for myself, but for them, for their future. We don't, there's, there's so much that's unknown about this, this chemical that's being spewed into, into our air that it terrifies me.
You're absolutely right. We, there's a lot of unknowns, and do you get our direct connect? Did you see the letter I wrote to?
I did.
You did?
I did.
Okay, so.
And, um, thank you. But I'd like to see Darien more involved. It's, this is not only a fight for Willowbrook and their residents, but all the residents in the surrounding communities, Darien being included.
What work do you think we should be doing?
Um.
You know, we have, you know, we have no control over shutting this down.
Yes.
Except for the letters we write to the EPA.
But we are stronger in numbers, ma'am.
Pardon me?
We are stronger in numbers. At our demonstration on Saturday, we had a good turnout, as I indicated. There's many of your residents in Darien that don't know anything that this is going on. I mean, I, I don't know what way you could reach out to everybody. Not everybody is, is internet savvy, the older, the older community. Um, I, I'm, that's one of my questions. How can you reach out to all your residents so that they are aware, so they can get involved?
We are, we are reaching out in every way we know. So it's up to the individual residents to take their care, to get the information that we send out, so they can get involved.
Okay, and which way are you reaching out to, to citizens? Like I said, not everybody is on Twitter and Facebook. How else are you reaching out to your citizens in Darien?
You, you expect us to go door to door? Is that what you're expecting?
No, I'm not asking you to go to door to door.
Okay.
I'm asking, I'm asking you for your opinion. What, what other way?
We're doing every way we can to get the word out.
Which is how? Give me an example.
Well, if I could help, I mean, we are, our direct connect that goes to probably almost four thousand people now. Our Facebook, all of our social media, we are covering.
I'm not on Facebook.
We send out, pardon me?
I'm not on Facebook.
But you're on direct connect?
No, I'm not. I don't know what that is.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what we had first asked. The, uh, that's an electronic newsletter that goes out to residents every Friday and on other special days, and that hits above four thousand people now. And we're getting the word out that way. The schools are also have been involved. Um, so, you know, getting the word out, we are doing that primarily social media. We have a newsletter that goes out every other month for people that really aren't computer savvy or may not be on social media. And we have information in that also. And surely, word of mouth and news, you know, I was surprised for you to hear a lot of residents don't know about it. I'm pretty sure a lot of residents do know about it.
I'm sure they do.
Yes.
The, the numbers that don't.
And.
We need to reach out to everybody.
Right, and if, if you haven't signed up for our direct connect newsletter, you should, and you should tell your neighbors to do that.
And I have no idea what you're talking about and how to sign up for it.
Okay, all, all we need is your, yeah, if you, if you email me your, with your email address, we'll send you up, sign you up automatically.
Okay.
And then you'll get that information. But, um, you know, we are getting a, a lot of feedback, and, and we do, we are trying to direct people to some degree to the Village of Willowbrook's website. But one of the things the city did recent.
And that's where I've gotten all my information from. That's, that's where I look toward.
Yeah, we are trying, we are trying to do that in terms of a centralized location, and that was, we did that early on. Otherwise, there's too many places where people would start trying to go to when there's one central place. But we are putting, we put out information almost every, every Friday on our direct connect with the goal of letting people know. And the city also has filed a lawsuit to intervene in the case with the Attorney General and the, and the DuPage County State's Attorney. So we've done that, Willowbrook's done that, Burr Ridge is also looking at that. So I think letting you know what we're doing is important. That's what we're trying to do. So if, if you don't have that message yet, we'll get you on our direct connect, or you can go to our website, everything's on there. But it'll be sent to you every Friday.
Okay.
When you, when you said you saw my letter, I assumed that you were on direct connect because just this past Friday.
No, I, I, I saw it on Willowbrook's website.
On my letter?
Yeah, yeah, we sent it to Willowbrook, and they put it on their website also.
Yeah, we, that was part of our direct connect that went on on Friday. So you'll definitely want to get ahold of City Hall to get your.
Because we, you're, the people on the east side of Darien, where I live, I'm only two miles away from this facility. You know, and right now, the water testing that they did is a mile, you know, from the facility. We don't know anything about this chemical. We don't know how far it extends. We do know that it stays in the air for months.
That's correct. We, there's a lot of information that's out there that we are sending out to our residents and pointing them in the right direction to find that information. Thank you for your comments.
Ma'am, do you watch, do you watch Channel Six on the TV at home?
No.
Channel Six has got this meeting live on it right now, and it's, and this meeting gets recorded a couple times throughout the course of the day. And it also, this meeting is also on, it goes on the City Darien's YouTube channel. So this is, this is also on TV and on the internet.
Okay. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, do we have any well water in Darien, or we're, we're all sitting?
We're, we're being tested. Yeah, we have, we have wells in Darien. It's mostly east of, of Clarendon Hills Road, where some of the homes have, still have wells. So those homes are being tested as we, as we speak.
Right, and just not to alarm anybody, let me, basically what has happened, DuPage County Health Department has sent out a directive that they wanted municipalities to provide them with a list of water customers, potable water customers that are on the city system, first of all. Those are not the systems that are being tested. What the DuPage County Health Department was looking at was individual wells. In those wells, people, residents in Darien, still, some of them have used well water for potable water. Okay, so that's what DuPage County Health Department is testing for. Our water is perfectly fine, so I just don't want to put another alarm out there.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of November seventeenth. Do I have a motion to approve?
Nineteenth.
Ah, a typo on her.
No.
November nineteenth, twenty-eighteen.
My minute says nineteen, seventeen.
The agenda says seventeenth.
Oh, I got, okay. Mine is correct, sorry. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November nineteenth?
Nineteenth, so much.
Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Marques. Any additions or deletions to the minutes? Then the roll, please. Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seven ayes and one absent. The minutes have been approved. Let's move to receiving of communications. Do any of the, Alderman have communications to share? Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One, one comment, one comment. I was at Stop Steragetics event on Saturday, and we got a lot of good feedback from the residents of Darien on your response to reaffirm our commitment to the State's Attorney and the Attorney General. So they're very pleased by that. So they want to thank, you know, City Administrator Vanna and the mayor for a quick response, so.
Well, I, I made sure that was hard hitting, the fact that we've, we've already had some results, test results back, and they are totally opposites. It doesn't make sense. And so with that in mind, it certainly.
It was a bit of a challenge to keep the one page, but I think we tried to get the message out, so it wasn't in four or five pages, but get the message out in one page because it's, you know, that's typically easier to read and what more people will stay tuned to, but.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Kenny?
Thanks, um, good evening, Madam Mayor. We've got some communications back and forth, Mr. Gomack and Anita Kwanzi on Shelley Court regarding the parking, and police, I think, might have been involved. And do we, you know, I'm seeing that, I didn't realize we had three emails here in the last half an hour or so. Where are we at with that, do you know?
With the Shelley Court situation, the parking. Basically, the issue, and again, just to recap, several months ago, a resident on Shelley Court had asked us to revisit the current restriction on parking there. Without not getting into other logistics, the Municipal Services Committee had looked at it once while we did. The Municipal Services Committee did look at it since a group was formed by the, I believe it was the school district.
School district.
By the school district. In conjunction with that, DuPage County Division of Transportation was involved, the Police Department, and that drive was to look at safer, safer, to make the area more secure and safer for pedestrians and motorists. With that said, we've basically taken Shelley Court and Carroll Court and have asked the group, whether it's the school, basically the school and or wherever else is participating in that group, to comment on the parking along Park Avenue as well as Shelley Court and Carroll Court. At the end of the day, there may be no feedback. With that said, the options at this point are either A, remove the signs on Carroll Court and Shelley Court and have no restriction on parking, and/or, or the second option was to modify the hours that are a little more realistic or in tune with the current programs that are happening with DYC and/or some of the curriculum, uh, school events that are happening there.
Okay, and I, and we got, um, I know a few of us got communications right after the, the heavy snow with the branches, because I guess it was so heavy with, with the branches, but what, uh, what can we tell the residents in a typical fashion when we have those events?
Were? I think, first of all, you know, we evaluate every storm, every storm, especially when trees come down or branches come down. In this particular case, the branches that came down really was not of any significance. And part of it is the branches that were coming down were a lot on private property. Um, you know, one thing I'd like to, you know, make sure that we get the message out there is that during the spring, summertime, we do have contracts out for tree trimming, and residents should look at that and possibly take advantage of it through our vendor. That would prevent some of that stuff as well. It's the ones that came down on the parkway were areas that were scheduled to be trimmed coming up December first. And those were in Alderman Vaughn's area, as well as Alderman Belzak's area. So, you know, we do look at it. If a tornado or a mini burst comes through, yeah, we would take appropriate action and execute a plan to remove the branches.
Okay, thank you, I'll have.
Any other communications to share? Then let's move on to the mayor's report, and this is always the fun time of the year when we call on our Home Decorating Committee to bring forward the, the, all the home decorating contest winners. And I would like to open up the floor to Jerry Legansky as, as part of our committee, Elizabeth Hayes, and Jim Kaiser. And take, take it from here.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. You know, the committee is myself, Jerry Legansky, Liz Hayes, and, and Jim Kaiser. And, you know, we, we were a little worried this year because you all know that Sunday after Thanksgiving, we got pounded with, with the snowstorm. And so we were a little worried, you know, how many people really got a chance to go out and decorate, but they did not let us down. These winners are very committed, diehard decorators, and the snow did not hold them up one bit. We had twenty-one nominations, which was a good number. We, you'll see some new faces today, and you'll also see some old faces as well who've been past winners. A couple of things we saw this year, which was really kind of nice, more people were doing cutouts, what we used to remember as kids, hand painted cutouts with spotlights on them. I mean, that's what I remember growing up. So we saw some of that this year, which is kind of, you know, kind of like a old fashioned type of, of decorating. Grinch is popular. I think the movie's been a hit because there were some nice Grinch displays and people using Grinch in their decorations. And even some Star Wars. Star Wars is, is, is popular this year. There were some people that decorated with Star Wars. As you get to know these neighbors of ours who are decorators, I kind of want to fill you in on, on some of the things that I've learned from working with these people and meeting them over the years. Um, you know, they don't do this for themselves. I mean, they really are doing it for their love of decorating. Maybe they had a, it was a family tradition growing up. They have good memories of it. You know, they like to have people come to their homes and see it. They like to do it for neighbors. So they're, you know, they're really not doing it for themselves. I mean, they are doing it because they, you know, want to kind of give back to the community. They're really artists in a lot of ways. I mean, they're, you know, they plan things, they, 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 they come up with an idea. So I like to think of them really as, as artists, and, you know, if, if, if a bulb or a string of lights is out in my house, I really don't care. But not, not these winners today. They're out there changing lights in the middle of a cold night, and it bugs them if the light's out. So they're out there fixing things to make sure it's just perfect, and that's just really something that I, I found very interesting, that, you know, they care that much about their displays. They do like traditions. Like I said, they probably had good memories growing up, where they even try to bring some of those things as kids back into their decorations now at their homes and pass it on to their kids, which is a, a very nice touch. And so I just want to say that we're very grateful for their time that they put into this. We enjoy doing this, and we enjoy recognizing them, and thank them for the time and money that they put into this to make Darien a little brighter place. So enough about that. Like I said, we have five honorable, I mean, four honorable mentions and five winners. And the honorable mention winners really are not in a, any particular order. But the, um, the first honorable mention we have is eight eighteen Bel Air Drive, which is the home of Jason and Rachel Steeman. And I know Jason's here because when I went to meet him, I, I realized that we sit about a section apart from the Bears at the Bear game, so we were, if I'm, if I'm a little hoarse today, you know why. Jason and Rachel have been Darien residents for seven years, and, and Jason does the decorating. There is white lights along the eaves, windows, and roof lines, and there's white lights on the bushes as well. There's red and green spotlights that highlight their home, and a laser from their roof that highlights their front lawn. They were winners a couple of years ago, and they had a movie projecting on their front home, which was a first. Well, Jason's kind of taking it to another level. You know, growing up, we had drive, drive-in theaters. This is a drive-up theater. I mean, you can literally drive up and sit in your car and turn on eighty-eight point seven, and you can listen to the movie that's being played on their home. So if you need a cheap date, maybe it's a place to go. But take your kids and enjoy it. Also, on their front lawn, there is a dancing Santa and a snowmobile that has a little bit of a story to it, and I'm just glad Jason's here that, that he was able to tell me the story. But there's a real snowmobile as part of their display on their front lawn, which is definitely a first. So I see Jason's here, but, so thank you, Jason and Rachel, for Darien's first drive-up theater.
Okay. Congratulations.
Our next honorable mention is, is a, is a repeat customer, too. Seventy-four oh six Richmond Avenue, the home of Ron and Kathy Needham. I saw them come in. And Ron and Kathy have lived in their Darien home for eighteen years now, and they've got a huge yard that makes a great canvas, a great landscape for just a, an assortment of beautiful holiday decorations. Both Ron and Kathy enjoy decorating, and they even take time, they tour other displays across the county, just if they hear there's something good out there to go see. New to their display this year was they also had some cutouts, and it takes time to make these things. These are wooden cutouts that you have to actually carve out, and then they're hand painted. So it's a wooden Snoopy, Charlie Brown, and of course, the Grinch. And you can even see the Grinch over on the side, and you, they've got the lights hooked up, so it looks like he's stealing them off the bushes. There's a star with lighted rays glowing nearby, and Mr. and Mrs. Santa are also new to the display, especially if you have children. Children would be delighted to, to go and see this display. There's a projection, light projection on the east side of the house. There's a moose, a bear, trees, Santa, arches, penguins. And Santa and his reindeer are airborne over on the one side of the house. It looks like they're flying over a little town. There's little outlines of houses. So Ron, Kathy, thank you for this grand display. It's just a delight to see. Do you want to come up and get your certificate?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Yes.
Um, our next honorable mention is, is, is new to our, our awards. It's at seventy-nine twenty-nine Adams. It's the Angus Family Home, and I'm looking to see if they came here. There we are, back there, there's Mr. Angus. I stopped by, I, I spoke with their son, Jack, and they had a, a beautifully coordinated display in just red and white lights. It's, it's so color, it's so attractive in terms of, of color. They've lived in this home for six years. I later talked to, to his dad later on, too, and there's a sign on the front walk, then when you walk up, that informs the visitors that Clark Griswold lives here, along with a let it snow sign. Jack told me that the decorations are done by himself, his dad, and his brother. There's a reindeer pulling a sleigh sitting in the front yard, along with lighted snowmen, candy canes and lanterns. Two giant, giant candy canes flank the garage door. They're as big as a garage door themselves. There's a lighted reindeer glowing in the upstairs window, and the front door is wrapped like a package with a giant red bow. So I thanked Derek, I think you said your name, Darren. I thanked Darren over the phone when he called me back yesterday, and it's a beautiful holiday site, so thank you. Come on up and get your certificate.
Congratulations. Another honorable mention is at nine oh one Bel Air.
It's the home of Nick Hamilton and Erica Lucas. I see the family right here in front. Nick has lived in this area for five years. Erica's lived here for twenty-seven years. And when I went to visit their, their home, it was Kayden, who's four, informed me he is the decorator in the family. There we go. Good job, Kayden. The family's done a great job of lighting this display. Again, there's a soldier, there's a snowman guarding the front door, along with large candles. There's candy canes lining the driveway. The yard has lighted snowmen, a Santa, a nativity scene, and a train. There's twinkling stars, a Merry Christmas greeting, and blinking lights on the basketball pole for a completely fun holiday season. So thank you, Nick, Erica, and, and the kids for, for this wonderful holiday scene. Thanks a lot. Come up and get your certificate.
This must be Kayden. Kayden tells me he's the decorator. Congratulations. Okay.
Okay, moving on, who are, starting with the number five place winner, is eight oh nine Bel Air, home of Rob and Annette Soraco. There they are, yep. I saw them when I came in. Rob and Annette have lived at this address for fifteen years, or lived in Darien for fifteen years, and the last nine years at this address, and their display is Whoville. And home of Cindy Lou Who and site of the Grinch's transformation. Rob made all the wooden cutouts for this display. I counted seventeen individual cutouts. I probably missed some. Some are large, some are small. He said it took him a week to do the shapes. I thought he was going to tell me two months. And then he hand painted all of them, too. So the characters are lit up by floodlights. On the second story of the house, you see the Grinch, and the Grinch is like pulling himself along the gutter with five separate wreaths up at the top. And I mean, it's, it's second story. Cindy Lou and the other Whoville residents are gathered around a lighted tree on the grass, and this display is completed by signs on the porch, a lighted igloo, a penguin, a moose, and snowflake. Thanks for your hard work on this, Rob and Annette. This is just a delightful display.
You are one. Yeah. You're welcome.
Okay, moving up to fourth place is a familiar address, nineteen oh five Center Circle, which is the home of Dan and Ann McGinley. Dan is the.
I counted 17 individual cutouts. I probably missed some. Some are large, some are small. He said it took him a week to do the shapes. I thought he was going to tell me two months. And then he hand-painted all of them, too. So the characters are lit up by floodlights. On the second story of the house, you see the Grinch and the Grinch is like pulling himself along the gutter with five separate wreaths up at the top. And I mean, it's the second story. Cindy Lou and the other Whoville residents are gathered around a lighted tree on the grass. And this display is completed by signs on the porch, a lighted igloo, a penguin, a moose and snowflake. Thanks for your hard work on this, Rob and Annette. This is just a delightful display.
Okay, moving up to fourth place is a familiar address, 1905 Center Circle, which is the home of Dan and Ann McGinley. Dan is the architect for this great display and starts decorating before Halloween. They've been residents of Darien for 25 years. There are colored lights on the eaves and roof lines with gold icicles hanging from the eaves as well. Colored bulbs outline the walkways and there's wreaths on the garage. There's a series of inflatables on the front lawn, which include a Merry Christmas greeting, Santa and his sleigh with reindeers, along with a snowman and Christmas tree. And not only is Santa on display upstairs, but there's Grinch up there as well. There's an inflatable snowman by the driveway. They have their tree in the front window and there are also green and red laser lights that light up their home. If you look on the second floor, there's a laser show with, and there's also projections of presents and Santas on their garage door and red and green lights on their fence that look like the Northern Lights. And as you walk up, again, there are three cutout, hand-painted elves that Dan said his father made over 50 years ago. And that really struck me because again, it's Dan's bringing his dad's, you know, display to his home now. And again, as you drive up, be sure to roll on your window because you'll hear 93.9 playing. So not only do you take it in with vision, you can hear the sound of carols playing as well. So thanks again, Dan and Ann, for your great display.
I'm guessing this is the guy that does all the decorating. Absolutely, yes. I do it, yeah. Thank you. Dan's dad was our city treasurer for many years, Lou McGinley. His photo is out in the lobby there.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, moving up to our third place winner, someone new as well. Our third place winner this year is 8125 Sawyer, which is the home of Henry and Maria Harth. And I know they're here. Henry and Maria have been Darien residents for 29 years. Henry's the architect, but they say they normally work as a team, but unfortunately, Maria's on the DL, she had some surgery, so she wasn't as big a help as she has been in the past. But they start decorating again before Thanksgiving, so they beat the snow this year. And there are white LED lights everywhere on this home. There is not a line, a roof line, an eve, anywhere that doesn't have white LED lights somewhere on it. And at the very top of their home is this big star as well. Henry told me he loves LEDs because it keeps his costs down. He says his electric costs have probably gone down like 50% and you'll know why, because there's just so many lights on this house. There's a tree on the driveway alone that has over 1,000 lights on it, just on one tree. It's just really spectacular. There is candy canes and toy soldiers that line the entire front of their home and along their driveway as well. There's two reindeer that pull a sleigh filled with presents and there's a snowman as well on the front lawn. Their Christmas tree is proudly displayed in their front window. So thank you, Henry and Maria, for your beautiful holiday display again this year.
You were on the DL list. Yes. Sorry, I squeezed it.
Okay, moving forward. The number two place winner is 1301 Iroquois Lane, home of Anna and Risto Kirov. There she is. Anna and Risto and their three children, Christopher, Anthony and Victoria, have lived in the house for four and a half years on Iroquois Lane. And it's so hard for me to describe how artistic this display is. It's just a most unusual display of color. There's traditional lights there, but there are other colors that they've blended in and it's just a beauty to behold. The roof line, the bushes in front, the chimney and perimeter of the yard are all outlined in a very unique fashion. There's a huge Santa Claus sitting in the front yard, there's a soldier, Olaf is there and snowflakes. You've got chasing lights and color-changing lollipops. And on the garage door, there is a projection and it's line drawings. It's a very unique projection. It's line drawings that goes through a series of displays that includes children and gifts and greetings. Christmas music is playing for those who stopped to see the lights. And thank you, Kirov family, for this really beautiful display. Music.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Nice job.
Okay, the first place winner this year is someone who won three years ago. And the address is 7718 Sawyer, which is the home of Sherri Gillespie. And I don't think Sherri's here. She said she had a meeting tonight that she was going to try to switch, so maybe she wasn't able to make it. But the Gillespie family have been Darien residents for 36 years. Sherri is the decorator and she starts before Thanksgiving as well. All the decorations are real, from the tree inside their home to the swag, the evergreen swag that's around all their eaves with white lights on there. There's two redlit candy canes and a snowman that anchor the front of their home. There's a big wreath with white lights on the front as well. All the shrubs in front are decorated in either red or green lights and all the larger trees are adorned in these bright white lights. It's really done very, very, very well. It's an artwork, really it is. And no detail is left undone. There's lights on the mailbox and when you ring the doorbell, it plays carols. So again, every detail is taken care of. There are red, green and white solar ornaments on their front tree on their parkway. So there's ornaments that just light up and they're solar, so they just light up throughout the night. And then also on the front lawn, there's firefly lights. There's these little lights that just are situated all throughout the front lawn that just go off and on it one at a time. And I'm sure once it snows, it's going to be really beautiful. So congratulations, Sherri Gillespie, for this year's first place winner. Okay, and lastly, last year, we started having the best block. And as you can see, there's been a few numbers on the 800 block of Bel Air. Bel Air's really starting to step up their game and do a very, very nice job. But again, this year, the 7700 block of Sawyer is again, best block. So is anybody here from?
Hey. Okay. Jerry, did you want to take both of them?
Yeah.
I've got two for 7700 and 78. You want to take both? Okay. And then did you want?
Yeah.
Hey.
I didn't know. She doesn't know.
No, nobody knows.
She doesn't know.
No one knows.
Yeah. Yes. Big surprise. Big surprise.
Yeah, there's quite a few homes on the block again that are decorated very, very nicely. So I think Sherri kind of coordinates it. So not only is she doing her own home, but she's helping neighbors and doing the block. And it's just, there's a lot of nice homes on that block, so make sure you take a chance to go down there. This Wednesday will be the bus tours. I think there's two bus tours going out again this year, 8:30 and 6:30 and 8, I think it is.
6:30 and 8, yes.
So I think they're going to be.
That I'm not sure. I haven't heard whether the buses are filled. But if anyone's interested in doing the tour, either 6:30 or 8 o'clock, to go around and see all these beautiful home decorations, please feel free to call City Hall and sign up. We still have time for you to sign up because the tour is Wednesday night.
Correct.
And thank you to Jerry.
Jerry, yep.
Jim, Elizabeth, thank you so much for all of your effort. Jim, you're going to show off the poster there?
Yeah, Jim's got the poster. I think we nearly.
You've got the poster board with all these beautiful homes.
You want me to bring everybody up for a picture again?
Well, it sounds great. Sounds great. Okay, all the winners?
Yeah.
All the winners?
Yeah, it worked last year. That worked out pretty good.
Okay, good. All the winners, come on up.
It's almost the whole audience.
That's nice. I have an extra write-up if they want to have it for the bus tour maybe, if they want to talk about it.
You want to take that? Yeah.
Yeah, Jerry, you'll need that.
Okay, tall people in the back.
Wernicki?
Tall, tall people in the back. Okay. And then Jim, are you going to have the photos up?
Hi, Mr. McGinley.
Yes, we'll have a couple of these little shavers hold the poster board.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Sorry to hear about that.
Well, that might cover you up, huh?
Your dad and I were in the Lions Club for a long time.
And where's the bear?
Oops, I got it. Yeah, where am I going to fit it?
She doesn't do any decorating.
Steve Wernicki, did you decorate your house?
Go right in here, huh? Okay, I don't want to stand in front of anybody.
There you go. Should we get in here? Okay.
I'm going to zoom in.
We'll take a couple here. Everybody smile.
Cheese.
Applesauce, the Grinch. Alrighty, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Congratulations. Thank you all. Jim does a great job. Steve?
Rob, take care.
There's a check in there for Sherri. Okay, all right, thank you.
Go use it for a block party next year.
Jim, can we see? Can you hold it up so we can see?
Jim, where's your sweater? Thanks, Jim.
Ah, nice.
It did last year.
Where's the winner? Nice pictures, Jim.
Dan, we could put that on top of the garbage can holder upstairs.
The container looks great up there. It looks finished.
We should have to close the top down.
That was good, Lester. That was good.
Cancer Smashers should have went first. The whole audience, darn it. Probably could have shown us.
Well, I'd like to invite Beth and Dan Tischler to come forward. We probably should have had you come first so the audience could have seen all the wonderful things you do.
Get them back in here.
Well, don't forget, this is televised. This meeting is televised. Oh, I'm not trying to scare you or anything, but I just want you to know that there will be people watching this meeting tonight and then in the future, we'll be able to see all the wonderful things that you're talking about tonight.
Awesome. Hi, my name is Nicole Kilray and I proudly stand before you as a representative of Darien's own Cancer Smashers. On behalf of all the Cancer Smashers, I want to thank you all for allowing us to come before you tonight to tell you about us and our latest mission to end a particular kind of cancer. Our foundation started in 2011 with just a handful of kids from Darien helping to raise money and awareness to help fight cancer. We've all been affected by this horrible disease in one way or another, whether it be a friend or a relative losing their battle to cancer or someone fighting to beat it. As a group, we have grown to realize the impact that we can have. We have raised over $100,000, collected over 8,000 toys for kids in and around Darien, and donated thousands of pieces of winter clothes and have regularly appeared on TV, have appeared in many news articles and received multiple awards. We are very proud to say that we pay for our organization through our recycling program so that no Cancer Smasher has to pay for anything and also so that 100% of the money we raise goes to cancer research. These are all great things that we are very proud of, but we have not cured all cancers, which is our main goal. On January 5, 2018, cancer took one of Darien's children, Joey. Joey was only seven years old. He was a bright, silly kid who loved baseball, just a normal Darien kid. He unfortunately lost his battle with DIPG, a rare form of pediatric brain cancer. We learned that at the time, DIPG is incurable and there are very few doctors doing aggressive research on this disease that took our Joey. We refuse to sit back and do nothing for Joey's family and for all the other children who have been affected by DIPG. We are proud to say that we have found a doctor from Robert H. Lurie Cancer Center of Northwestern University and Lurie Children's Hospital, who is going to specifically work on DIPG research in honor of Joey. In order to help him with this research, we need to raise funds, which is why we are here today. Over the Darien Fest weekend, we sold raffle tickets for this Cubs painting, displayed right there. This painting is significant as the Cubs were Joey's favorite baseball team. We were able to sell quite a few tickets, but we have more to go. Our goal is to sell all 1,000 tickets so we can give 20,000 to Dr. Becker so he can begin his research. We are proactively going around town to different organizations to spread the word for this raffle. Can you help us by asking friends and family if they would like to purchase a ticket for $20? We have some with us right now or we can set up an appointment to deliver tickets to someone who would like to help. Please know that we are also accepting any donation amount as well if someone would rather do that. Again, on behalf of all 62 Cancer Smashers, I thank you for allowing us to be here today. Perhaps if we all give a little time and/or money, we can honor our friend Joey in a true Darien way and end DIPG. Thank you.
Somebody else going to speak? Okay, then I need to ask a question. Who did the artwork on this? On the?
It's Elliot Frum from Art Beat Live. He painted it for it and donated it to us.
Wow, that's great. Here's what I was thinking. When are you going to have the raffle announcement, the winner?
The end of the year. We're selling tickets until the December 31st.
So you're not going farther than that? You're not going into the new year? Okay, okay. Because I was going to suggest we put the painting, the artwork up here in the City Hall with some sort of, you know, description on it as to what you're doing, but so you could extend the period, you know, of time to collect money? I was just thinking, you know, that's, you know. Would you trust us to keep it in the lobby, you know, to?
We'll leave it here tonight?
Because, and then Beth or Dan, do you want to create something to put on there as an announcement of what we're doing?
Sure, the kids could definitely put something together, a display and.
Mary Belmonte already put something on Direct Connect.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Because like you heard tonight, 4,000 residents are on that, are on Direct Connect. I was so surprised when that woman, you know, was asking me to do things when jeepers, I don't think she checked out all the avenues that we advertise ourselves. But any rate, yeah, whatever we can do to help you advertise this.
How do you buy a ticket? Do you have Facebook? I may have a couple of dollars.
We have physical tickets that we've been selling and then also on our website, www.cancersmashers.org. We have a PayPal account there where you can donate and in the description, you can put how many tickets you'd like. And we get that directly to our email so we can reach out to get you, if you want the physical tickets, or we can just tell you the ticket numbers and we can fill them out. And we can do that. Or if you need to just contact us directly, our email is cancer smashers one at gmail.com. And we have a Square account too that we can email and invoice over as well.
Can I ask how many tickets you have remaining?
A lot.
A lot.
You know, we're just, yeah, you know, we were just thinking out loud here, we don't get a lot of foot traffic coming into City Hall, so maybe it isn't a good place to put that piece of artwork. Can you think of another location where it might be a better venue to show this off?
The library?
That's what I said. I said the library, but we'd have to ask them, you know, for permission if they would allow.
How about the Park District?
Churches, rotating on the churches.
The only concern we have obviously is, I mean, to make sure it's protected.
The protection of it, yes.
If somebody's always going to be there, then I think we'll be okay with it. I don't need a police guard or anything like that. I'm just saying though, if there's always, if there's movement and people there, then I think we'll be fine.
You know, I might be overthinking this too. I just, I don't know if I'm going to. I don't need a police guard or anything like that. I'm just saying those, if there's always, if there's movement and people there, then I think we'll be fine. You know, I might be overthinking this too. I, I just, I don't know if I'm going to a little bit too far. We'll point it out to the kids too, and see, maybe if we can come up, they come up with some pretty cool ideas. So how about we do that at our next meeting? Okay, yeah, because then we can reach out to the Park District or whatever, you know, to see if they have ways to make sure it's protected. They have that desk right up the, up-
I can have an answer tomorrow.
Oh, Mr. Soracco, there's the Park District right there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll take two tickets. Yeah, I'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, Rob, you could, you could put that right on the dais at the, at the, at the entryway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all of you. Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, guys.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to you too.
Take care, guys.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Hey, Beth, how are you doing here? Thank you. You have to show their ring on. There you go. Great speech. You did a good job. Hi, thank you, thank you. And you're all on TV too. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Here's a tip off the old black. Hey Danny, good seeing you again. Yeah, they need to go, they need to keep this raffle going longer.
Especially if he's got a stack of tickets like that.
But they might already have the date of that raffle.
They'll be out of school next week, so they can, they can work hard, you know. $20,000.
Yeah, that's- Okay, let's move on to the city clerk's report.
I have a couple of items, Madam Mayor. Darien City offices will be closed on December 24th and 25th in observance of Christmas, and also on January 1st for the New Year's Day. I have an announcement about the notice of simultaneous filing. The lottery will take place on Wednesday, December 26th, 2018, at 4:00 PM in the city clerk's office. The lottery is to determine the ballot placement for the consolidated election, which will take place on April 2nd, and the following candidates will be affected. Ted V. Shower running for mayor, and Joseph A. Marquez running for mayor. They had simultaneous filing, and gentlemen, I have a letter for each of you that I'd like to give you, so that you have it in writing as far as when the, if we could pass that down. And it will be posted on the, the door, as well as on the city's site, website.
Thank you, sir.
And do you want me to mention who has filed?
You've never done it before, but go for it, yeah, go for it, yeah.
Okay, filing for the position of mayor, there were three candidates that have submitted their petitions, and it's Ted V. Shower, Joseph A. Marquez, and Stephen Leopoldo. For the city clerk, Joanne Ragona. For the city treasurer, Michael Corin. For Ward 2, Lester Vaughn. Ward 4 is Tom Clistic. Ward 6 is Eric Gustafson and Francis Sabatka.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to department head information. We'll start with Chief. You were still going?
I have no report, Mayor, thanks.
I crossed you off already.
Thanks.
Bedtime there, bedtime.
This is supposed to be a happy meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, let's move on to Police Chief Thomas.
I have no, nothing formal, but can I ask any questions?
Yeah, he's got his monthly report in here.
Merry Christmas. Chief, you had something in there about the reverse 911, as well as the 911. You just gave a couple of websites to go to. One was a Fox website. Where would one actually go to apply for that, though? Not the reverse necessarily, but the one where you give your information and they know about you. The Smart111? You can do that through Ducom or the Smart111 itself. Okay.
Well, that's on here. That's a website that he has on it.
Yeah, one was Fox and one was, yeah. There should be two for explaining what Smart111 is, and then there was one where the article was published from ABC, I think it was. It said Fox. Oh, Fox, yep. Okay.
Anything else for the chief? Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. I did have to dial 911 for trucks parked illegally still on, I don't know if it's that county, but it's Cass Avenue in Frontage Road. Right as you go to Municipal Services, there's a semi truck parked there blocking the view. Calling 911 twice, it still seems to be a very repeated issue. Is that county? Should I reach out to the county to look at putting signs there, because-
It seems that no one has taken responsibility on it, whether it's the Illinois Department of Transportation or DuPage County. Our opinion is under the Illinois Department of Transportation jurisdiction.
Okay, I can give Greg and Julia a call and have them double check too on the county level, but every time I'm out there, there's always someone parked illegally out there, so.
Where all of them are parked illegally?
So right when you're turning, for example, you're heading Cass out, turn left to go to Municipal Services, that intersection right there, there's always trucks parked illegally blocking the view.
Going south on Cass Avenue?
Correct.
North Frontage Cass.
Oh, okay.
Usually a black truck. It's a white truck that's usually there.
South, south, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. I was confused.
Scared myself.
Whose property is it, you know? That's, I'm seeing inside, that's part of the median.
They're parking on the front of the road? Yeah, I can share a good picture.
Okay.
I did, I did have one, Chief.
Sure.
Focus Patrol, and I see it's down considerably. What exactly is Focus Patrol and why is it down?
Focus Patrol is when officers on a particular situation. So if you have an increase in burglary of motor vehicles in a specific area, then they're spending time in that area, then it's Focus Patrol. In the past, Focus Patrol was anything that they put themselves out on. So you may put yourself in a shopping mall, and there's six businesses there. I put myself out six different times in order to drive up numbers. It's not a numbers game. We just want to make sure that officers are where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything, any other questions for staff? We also have Dan Gombach with Municipal Services here. Any questions for him this evening?
For the last snowstorm that we had, did you guys try out that pre-spray?
No, you know, we, the equipment wasn't all in yet, and in that particular application, we would have not used it just due to the temperatures.
Go to high up?
Yes.
Okay, no more questions? All right, let's move on to the treasurer's report. Treasurer Corin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181915, in the amount of $91,370.51 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended November 22nd, in the amount of $318,359, for a total to be approved of $409,374.10.
Motion to approve warrant 181915. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The warrant has been approved. The next warrant?
Hey, requesting approval of warrant number 181916, in the amount of $662,253.44 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended December 6th, in the amount of $285,594.17, for a total to be approved of $947,847.61.
So we have a motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Discussion? In the roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The warrant has been approved. Treasurer Corin, you want to go over the monthly report?
Hey, the monthly report for the seven months ended November 30th reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $10,285,010, expenditures of $8,119,758, current balance of $3,370,202. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $5,256,147, expenditures of $3,663,812, current balance of $2,622,960. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue, $335,093, expenditures of $187,191, current balance of $537,341. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue, $3,453,609, expenditures of $1,398,434, current balance of $2,169,220. And the capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of $224,851, expenditures of $3,928,808, current balance of $5,418,089.
Any questions for the treasurer on that report? Okay, let's move on to standing committee reports. Alderman Marquez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Municipal Services Committee is going to meet, I believe, next Wednesday, December 26th at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
12:26 at 6:30, okay. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next Admin Finance meeting is tentatively scheduled for January 7th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Do we have a police committee report?
I have that there. Tentatively scheduled to meet on January 21st at 6:00 PM in the Police Department Training Room.
Thank you. Let's move on to questions, comments.
Mayor, I'm sorry, in the meeting, it is typical that the council does not meet the first, the first Monday in January. Typically, it's around that holiday. We don't have any agenda items pending, so most likely we'll not meet-
What date does it fall on again?
The 7th.
7th.
It falls on the 7th?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have historically not had-
Yeah, we typically do not meet that, nor would the Admin Finance Committee, but at this point, there's no agenda items we would need to meet on, so.
So how do we announce that if, if, we've announced the January 7th, there's that Administrator Finance meeting?
Well, that's the next schedule. We don't have any agenda to talk-
Yeah, when we announce that he's going to postpone it or cancel it?
We usually put in Direct Connect if we're going to, if meetings are canceled.
Alrighty.
Or there's no agenda.
Don't you have to do a 24 hours notice for the papers or whatever?
Not for a cancel, no.
Oh, okay.
No, it's been plenty of times where you've announced, and then there was no pending agenda items. We've never had a meeting.
Right. The bottom line is, we'll get the, probably the notice that Friday beforehand, and go from there.
Okay.
So.
Alrighty. Let's then move on to questions, comments, agenda-related. I believe we covered everything during our work session, so there- Does anybody in the audience want to address the council on any of the items on the agenda? Okay, then let's move on to old business, and there being no old business, we'll move right to the consent agenda. I typically read all of the items that are on the consent agenda, because we don't take them individually. They are, it's an omnibus, omnibus vote. So I will read the A through H items. The first is a motion to grant a raffle of the, grant a waiver of the raffle license bond for the Lions Club. And the next is a motion to approve a resolution to adopt a memorandum in, of understanding regarding the peer jury program between the Village of Downers Grove and the City of Darien. Next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of new video surveillance systems for the police and municipal services departments from current technologies in the amount of $1,1,754. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental jurisdictional boundary line agreement between the City of Darien and the Village of Downers Grove. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute the Second Amendment to the structured lease agreement with Verizon Wireless, approved by Resolution R-59-11, with the First Amendment executed in August of 2016, which allows Verizon Wireless to locate telecommunications equipment on our Darien cell tower located at 1041 South Frontage Rose, Road. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Backflow Solutions, Inc., to establish and maintain a potable water backflow device program from 2019 through 2023, at a pass-through cost of $12.95 per backflow device. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering in an amount not to exceed $27,100 for the surveying and engineering of the open ditch and storm water conveyance system for 67th Street. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance amending the sign code, deleting the amortization requirement for non-conforming signs in the Route 83 corridor. Those are the items A through H. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marquez, seconded by Alderman Shower. The roll, please.
Marquez?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
All items have been approved. Let's move to new business now. And the first item is a motion to submit an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a zoning text amendment to review, hold a public hearing thereon, and report its findings and recommendations to the Municipal Services Committee and City Council regarding the OR and I Office, Research and Light Industry District, and the I-1 General Industrial District. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. I applaud this process that has been put in place for this review of, the very important review of our, of our ordinances regarding these, these zoning areas. The roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The item has been approved. Item B is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new enclosed trailer, model number RC Trailer, from A&W Auto Truck and Trailer, in the amount of $9,739. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded Alderman Shower. Discussion? The roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Remind me how old it was?
25 years.
25 years old. We're just now, we're just now replacing it, okay. Gee, Dan, you finally got what you wanted.
I know. It's one more out of the way, yes.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, questions, comments, and announcements? Alderman Marquez?
I don't know if the council is aware, but former mayor Al Stromalia passed away December 11th in Arizona. I believe he was also a Citizen of the Year at one time.
Yes, he was.
December 11th, Al was 87 years old. All the services were private, and they were all in Arizona.
I had no idea, no.
Yeah, the Darien Historical Society actually put out a notice on Facebook the other day. We, and I announced it the other night at the Lions Club Dinner Meeting, because a lot of people knew Al. But I wasn't sure, I thought maybe you might know, because usually-
I'm, I'm surprised that I, we didn't, they didn't notify us. I'm surprised that they didn't.
Yeah, because he was a former Citizen of the Year, as well as a former mayor of this-
Mayor, yeah.
Yeah, former mayor, and he was one of the, I don't think he was a founding father, but he was one of the earlier mayors in the City of Darien. So I, there is no memorial that was mentioned or anything like that, but I just wanted the council and the viewing public to be aware of that.
I saw Sharon Smirha, who was a good friend, at, whose wake did I just see her at? Oh my goodness. Yeah, so she probably knows.
Mr. McGinley said that his mom just recently died too.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Lou, historically, that's how long I've been around. I mean, he was our city treasurer for a very long time. His picture's out there. Dan doesn't, Dan doesn't look like him at all.
Landslide Lou.
Landslide, yeah, well, nobody else ran.
It's going to be like Landslide Corin.
It was, yeah. It was nice to see Dan again. Any other announcements? I just wish all of you Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, and hopefully all of our lives will slow down a little bit after, you know, with this week. My goodness. I feel like I'm, my motor is constantly running here. Any, any other announcements? Okay, then I wish, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Clistic, seconded by Alderman Kenny. All in favor?